I ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselor Zachem. Madam President?
Thank you very much. I want to welcome everyone to the Ayinella Chamber for our weekly city council meeting and want to thank the Vision India Foundation in particular for sending their delegation of young leaders from India to visit us. So we open our meetings with, in each meeting will be opened by a city councillor who introduces a clergy for the day. So today it is my pleasure to introduce Counselor Presley, who will introduce our clergy. So if everyone could please stand for the invocation, including all of our guests, please remain standing for the invocation and after the invocation, remain standing because we will then have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Presley.
Good afternoon, everyone. Reverend Hernandez is a senior pastor of Defenders Boston Church located in Dorchester. He was ordained under the Defenders of the Christian Faith Movement in 2006. Defender serves the community through many outreach programs, serving the disenfranchised and marginalized with ministries that aid the homeless, the ministries like the Rose of Sharon, which focuses on reaching and aiding victims of sex trafficking. Defenders Boston has been active for over three decades in the community.
Isaiah, Chapter 49, verses 8 through 12, read as follows. God also says, "When the times ripe, I will answer you; when victories do, I will help you. I form you and use you to reconnect the people with me, to put the land in order, to resettle families on the ruined properties. And I tell prisoners to come out, 'You're free,' and those huddled in fear, 'It's all right, it is safe now.'" And those, there'll be food stands along the roads, picnic on the hills, nobody will be hungry, nobody will be thirsty, shade from the sun, shelter from the wind, for the compassionate one guides them, takes them to the best spring. I'll make all my mountains into roads, turn them into superhighways. Look, these coming from far countries and those out of the north and those streaming from the west. The Holy Scripture clearly calls us to lift up those in authority in prayer. In obedience to the word of the Lord, would you join me in this prayer? Heavenly Father, we acknowledge that today more than ever, we need strength and direction. Today more than ever, we need courage and discernment. Today more than ever, we need you, Lord. The author of Hebrews points to heroes of the faith, heroes who stood up when others stood down, heroes that spoke up when others shut up, heroes that gave when others took. Today we pray for our elected officials that are entrusted with such a heavy burden. I pray that we resist the urge to keep the status quo, help us flee from the dangers of personal interest, give us strength to stand for the weak, to speak on behalf of those that have no voice. There is no denying, Lord, that we are in need of heroes from the steps of City Hall to the front porches of our houses. Every day we encounter people who are bound by drugs, abused in so many ways, people who are hurting and in need, and we must realize that as we wait on you, God, you are waiting on us to be the heroes that we were called to be. Cover your leaders with your wisdom, your love, and may the favor of our Lord Jesus rest on all of them. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
And now I'd like to invite up Counselor O'Malley for a special presentation to open the meeting.
I'd like to invite Gretchen O'Neil to please join us up on the dais. Council President Wu and I today are delighted to offer a very, very special resolution. I think many of you know that Brook Farm is a legendary part of my district of West Roxbury. Many of you have been there, perhaps not even knowing there. And I know all of my at-large colleagues have attended some wonderful neighborhood events at the Gardens of Getsemitary in West Roxbury, right off of BFW Parkway, and the original site was there. So Counselor President Wu and I have a joint resolution. If you'll indulge me, I will briefly read and then turn over to Gretchen for some remarks. But Gretchen is part of a group called New Brook Farm that has been established to both honor the historical heritage and legacy of that wonderful site in West Roxbury, is also to continue education programs, historical preservation, and other ways to really exemplify the notion of what Brook Farm meant throughout American history. So again, this is a resolution from Counsel President Wu and myself. It reads, "Whereas October 11th, 2016, is the 175th anniversary of the day Reverend George Ripley and Sophia Ripley purchased the Ellis Farm in West Roxbury, then part of Roxbury, to be the site of a new transcendentalist, utopian community; and whereas from 1841 to 1847, the Brook Farm community was dedicated to these principles: creating a spiritual union between physical labor and intellectual development, individual freedom, equal education and economic opportunities for all, equal pay for men and women, and the abolition of slavery; and whereas some of New England's most important thinkers and writers of the time lived and visited Brook Farm, including Nathaniel Hawthorne, Margaret Fuller, Ralph Waldo Emerson, Henry David Thoreau, and Elizabeth Peabody; and whereas Brook Farm Historic Site is a national historic landmark, a City of Boston landmark, and the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation Park, and furthermore is listed in the National Register of Historic Places, now therefore be it resolved that the Boston City Council and meeting assembled hereby declares October 11th, 2016, to be Brook Farm Day in the City of Boston, and this will live in perpetuity." So, thank you very much. It's here for Brook Farm. Gretchen O'Neil, who's the Vice President of the New Brook Farm, to maybe offer some words and some wonderful programming this morning.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, and the whole city council for this wonderful proclamation. New Brook Farm is a very small, all-volunteer, nonprofit organization based in West Roxbury that initially came together about five years ago with the idea that we would plant a garden at Brook Farm and sort of revive the farming aspect of Brook Farm. As you can imagine, since it's a DCR property and a historic site, and there were all kinds of concerns about digging it up, that's been, we're still working on it, we're not there yet, but in the course of learning about Brook Farm, the historic site, we've become fascinated with the wonderful history of this site, going back to prehistory and the Indians through the Brook Farm experiment. It then became an almshouse for the city of Roxbury. It was a Civil War encampment in 1861. It then became the Martin Luther home for orphans for about 100 years. So it's got a long and very rich history. Unfortunately, there's nothing of the original buildings left there now, just one building that dates from the orphanage. But we've gotten very interested in the site, learning about the site and the history, and trying to share this with our neighbors and with residents of the city. When we found out that the 175th anniversary of the purchase of the farm was this month, we decided to do some programming throughout the month to honor the history and the site as it is now with an exhibition at the West Roxbury Library, which I hope you'll visit, it will be there all month, a photography expedition next weekend. We're going to do a performance of the Women of Brook Farm in West Roxbury, which we've done a couple times, that was a wonderful program of readings written by the many women who enjoyed equal status at Brook Farm, one of the earliest instances of that in this country. So we're very excited about our programming, we love this place, we'd love to get more people out there to see it, it's beautiful, and we're just very, very happy to have this opportunity to inform you all about our work. Thank you.
We will thank you. I will, before you leave, as my staff, please help.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One. Okay. We will proceed with our formal business of the day. Madam Clerk, would you please mark that Counselor Siomo is present?
Thank you, Madam President.
And on to approval of the minutes. Are there any additions, edits, changes to the minutes from last week's meeting? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. And on to communications from his honor, the mayor, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1318, message and order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for, accept, and expend an award of $1 million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the FY 2016 Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program.
Docket number 1318 will be assigned to the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery.
Docket number 1319, message and order authorizing the Office of Environment, Energy, and Open Space to accept and expend the Coastal Community Resilience Grant of $227,000 for the Climate Ready Boston Initiative awarded by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Office of Coastal Zone Management.
Docket 1319 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment and Sustainability.
Docket number 1320, message and order authorizing the Office of Environment, Energy, and Open Space to accept and expend $65,000 in the form of a grant for the Climate Ready Boston Initiative awarded by the Barr Foundation.
Docket number 1320 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment and Sustainability.
Docket number 1321, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Larry S. Dakara as a member of the Audit Committee, her term expiring November 7, 2021.
Counselor Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to suspend and pass this reappointment and confirmation of Larry Dakara. It is a reappointment, and I think each and every one of us knows who he is and what he's done, his role as former president and a member of this body, and also about his continued contribution to our city. So I ask the members to suspend and pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. I would love to hear also from our Chair of Ways and Means, just on the Audit Committee, who I believe usually has some input in there, if there's any comments or concurrence.
I think the reappointment of Larry Dakara speaks for itself. He's a former member of this body, former president of this body, very involved in Boston politics and Boston history. I think he'd be a fine candidate.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. At this time, Counselor Linehan moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1321. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1321 has passed, and Larry Dakara has been confirmed as a member of the Audit Committee. Reports of public officers and others, Madam Clerk.
Madam President, would you like me to read 1321?
Both together would be great. Thank you.
Docket number 1322, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing of the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the Report and Decision on the Application of the Smith House Apartments, Chapter 121A, Project. Docket number 1323, notices received from the contract for payment in lieu of taxes entered into the City of Boston, the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation of Boston, and 25 Bid Kennedy LLC.
Docket number 1322 and 1323 will be placed on file. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1324, Counsel McCarthy offered the following order for hearing regarding the creation of a college and university engagement office within the City of Boston.
Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We are all aware that Boston is rich with institutions of higher learning, adding much to our local economy and to our city. Students from across the country and across the world attend our schools, receive incredible educations of unparalleled caliber. Along with them comes a continuously growing relationship between the City of Boston, the neighborhoods, and these institutions. We have, over the months that I've been here and had the privilege of serving on the City Council, often before, the conversation about the role and contributions made by our colleges and universities has come up, and much of that conversation has clearly been around the pilot program and often how to quantify the contributions made in cash payments versus in-kind donation. And I've been able to firsthand see how the in-kind donations from time to time and resources have fulfilled the richness of the city as well as its residents. I believe that by establishing a college and university engagement office, we will be able to strengthen our ties with these institutions as well as serve them and their students in a much better and more efficient manner. We have, we need to have a place where everyone can be involved in the conversation, and I believe this office will be beneficial to both city, local nonprofits, youth groups, faith-based organizations, our own community centers, and certainly the institutions themselves. Currently, each student, each school has a government affairs office that creates its own independent relationships with people in government, and I know that we all have those independent relationships with these directors. This office would be a non-stop, a one-stop shopping, a clearinghouse, if you will, saving time and resources not only for the city but for the institutions, as well as connecting and bridging them to our community. While a greater understanding of how this office would work, how it would be staffed, and how it would be funded is certainly something that we'll be discussing within a working session, I believe that it's a conversation well worth having, and I look forward to having a working session and a robust discussion regarding this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor McCarthy, thank you for calling for this important hearing. I agree wholeheartedly that we should work to have our colleges and universities more engaged in the City of Boston and not just when they need something from the city, but trying to make sure that they are paying their fair share of resources, both in-kind contributions and financial pilot payments. So I look forward to this hearing, I look forward to working with you, the mayor's office and the institutions on this, but I do want to add that I think it's incredibly important that as part of this process, we do talk to some of our institutions, especially some of the large ones, some in my district, like Northeastern University, who continuously do not meet their pilot obligations, I think do not meet their obligations to the community as a good institutional neighbor. There are certainly some schools that are great neighbors, Wentworth, I know you have some familiarity with, is one of the better citizens in my district, and really, there you go. Thank you for that, Counselor. But no, I think this is a great idea, but I do want to just make sure that we continue to try and hold these institutions for all the good that they do, and all they do to generate economic activity and knowledge and growth in our communities. They do also have an impact on the surrounding neighborhoods that sometimes gets swept under the rug and the glitz and the glamour of being one of the educational capitals of the world and all that investment. So I look forward to working with you on this, and thank you for calling for the hearing. Please add my name.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Zachem's name. Please add Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Linehan, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Baker. Please add the Chair's name. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
I want to thank Counselor McCarthy for showing leadership. It has only been 380 years since the first college was founded in the City of Boston, called Harvard, and in 380 years, we haven't put it together to have an office to deal with colleges and universities. We know that one in three people in the City of Boston are ages 20 to 34. We have a couple hundred thousand college students, and it is incumbent upon us to embrace those young people who come here, but ensure that the institutions that they go to actually do right, not only by us but also by them. I know that Counselor Presley has done a great deal of work around the difference in how sexual assaults are treated on campus rather than on city streets. That is an issue that is relevant to what we're talking about here, but also, we have an issue because we lose 52% of college students within six months of them graduating. We want them to stay here. The pilot actually means that we made an investment in them also as a city, because those colleges and universities don't pay the same tax rate. So we are investing in their students' education also. And I guess lastly, we should also show college students the relationship that we want to have with them. Sadly, the first interaction that most of them have with us is that we either ticket or tow their car, which is the first warm and fuzzy that we give them with city government, and then from there, there are usually pretty tense interactions. Harvard University, the past two years, has asked, and I got to go over with one of the mayor's staff last year, and also do it again this year, they do a day of service. So these are first-year students who just got here, and over 400 of them actually stepped up to clean up our schools, our playgrounds, and to serve the young people of the City of Boston. So I think there's really something to be said about having a better relationship, not only a contentious relationship with colleges and universities, but the students who actually go there for all of our constituents. But I think, I just want to really give Counselor McCarthy a great deal of credit for doing something that I think is way overdue, but also something that can truly shift the City of Boston towards being a better city and a city that's more ready to deal with the issues that we have, but also to keep more of those young people here to invest in our economy, to start their families here and to stay here in the City of Boston. So huge kudos to my friend, Counselor McCarthy, and I'd love to have my name added.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Jackson's name. Counselor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to come in the chair. You know, it is, it's promising to consider the potential when we are engaging colleges and universities and their students, which are not limited to youth. You know, there are so many working adults, and I hope within these 25 that we've cited, we'll also be including two-year institutions and community colleges that I think are often left out of this conversation, but that we are not only engaging this population, these institutions around contentious move-ins, institutional expansion, community benefits negotiations, or even by subpoena. You know, very often, we are resource-rich but results poor, and the way that we can ensure that we are resource-rich and that that is then manifest in our outcomes is to begin with centralizing and improving our coordination and our alignment with everything else. So I just commend the maker, long overdue, awesome idea, and I wish to have my name added.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Presley's name. And docket 1324 will be assigned to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Personnel orders.
Docket number 1325, Counselor Wu for Counselor Siomo offered the following order.
Counselor Siomo moves for suspension and passage of docket 1325. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1325 has been passed.
Docket number 1326, Counselor Wu for Counselor Presley offered the following order.
Counselor Presley moves for suspension and passage of docket 1326. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1326 has been passed. I am informed by the clerk that there are two late filed matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Oh, three? Just two. There should be one from Counselor Asabi George and one that's a personnel matter. Does everyone have a copy of the second one as well? Okay, we'll need to get, if we can, Ron, could we get some help with the, making sure counselors have a copy of the personnel order?
It's just a personnel order for Counselor Big.
For the packet? Okay. And does everyone have a copy of Counselor Asabi George's first late file? Okay, so we will proceed with that one. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first late filed matter, the rest?
September 30th, 2016, Counselor Michelle Wu for Counselor Baker.
Oh, Madam Clerk, could we start with Counselor Asabi George's, please? Yes, as we pass around the other one.
Okay. In the City Council, offered by Counselor Asabi George, order for hearing regarding the impact of homelessness on young adults. Whereas youth and young adults aged 18 to 24 who are experiencing homelessness typically fall into a gap in services that are available to younger children or older adults. Therefore, be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing to examine to how the impacts of homelessness on youth and young adults in the City of Boston, and how to best coordinate and utilize existing resources where there are needs for more. Filed October 5th, 2016.
Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise today to call for a hearing order regarding the impact of homelessness on youth and young adults in the City of Boston. Many of us here have worked on elements of this issue, and I want to thank in particular Counselors Presley, Counselor Zachem, and Counselor Wu for their work on the LGBTQ youth homelessness issue and concerns in the City of Boston. I also want to acknowledge the great work that the mayor and his team are doing to end chronic veteran homelessness and individual homelessness in the city. I'm excited to work with them as they begin to formulate a plan for youth homelessness. Youth and young adults ages 18 to 24 fall into a critical service gap. They no longer have access to resources that are available to younger children. Some of them have aged out of family shelter, foster care, or other state systems, but they can't yet appropriately access the resources that are available to older adults. Young adults experiencing homelessness need different resources and deserve age-appropriate services. One of the reasons why I'm late filing this matter today is that I recently became aware of a timely matter that I hope to address in a hearing in the coming weeks. As you know, the winter months are a critical time for people experiencing homelessness, and this particular age group is especially vulnerable as the nights get colder. We are also very concerned that during this time, this age group of 18 to 24-year-olds are also falling victim to human trafficking. 28% of unsheltered youth report trading sex for basic needs. We have amazing partners who work hard every day to keep these young adults safe. Bridge Over Troubled Waters, Youth on Fire, JRI, and more are working to make sure that they have the resources they need to get through the winter, and I hope to give them an opportunity to tell us what we can do to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George.
adults experiencing homelessness need different resources and deserve age-appropriate services. One of the reasons why I'm late filing this matter today is that I recently became aware of a timely matter that I hope to address in a hearing in the coming weeks. As you know, the winter months are a critical time for people experiencing homelessness, and this particular age group is especially vulnerable as the nights get cold. We are also very concerned that during this time, this age, age group of 18 to 24-year-olds are also falling victim to human trafficking. 28% of unsheltered youth report trading sex for basic needs. We have amazing partners who work hard every day to keep these young adults safe. Bridge Over Troubled Waters, Youth on Fire, JRI, and more are working to make sure that they have the resources they need to get through the winter, and I hope to give them an opportunity to tell us what we can do to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sabi George. Would anyone else like to speak on the late file or add your name? Madam Clerk, would you please add Counselor Presley's name? Please add Counselor O'Malley. Please add Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Baker. Please add the Chair's name. Counselor Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you. I rise to commend the author of this hearing and for the focus of this particular group. Bridge Over Troubled Waters has been in my district since I've, I became District City Council nearly 10 years ago and has been in that area for a very long time. It's one of those places that a couple of nuns got together and decided that this would, there was a population, like many other great service, non-for-profit agencies, and needed attention. I think it was in the late 60s, 70s, when the common was full of young people trying to find their way. So I commend this. I think this population is growing as a homeless population, and it needs all the attention it can get. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan.
Add my name.
Madam Clerk, would you please add Counselor Linehan's name? The first late filed matter will be assigned to the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery. And everyone should have a copy of the second late filed matter. Is that correct? Great. Madam Clerk?
September 30th, 2016. Counselor Michelle Wu for Counselor Baker ordered.
Counselor Baker moves for suspension of the rules and passage of the second late filed matter, which is a personnel order. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The second late filed matter has been passed. There are three late filed matters for the consent agenda. Hearing no objection. Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The consent agenda has been adopted. Counselor Sabi George? Oh, one second. Would anyone like to pull anything from the green sheets? Okay. No takers for the green sheets? Counselor Linehan?
I was distracted on the last matter.
You have the floor for the green sheets.
Keep an eye on me, Madam President. I rise to ask that a number of matters be pulled from the green sheets today. The, the docket numbers are 1283. This is on page nine of 14. 1285. 1286. 1287. 1288. 1289. 1290. 1291. 1292. 1293. 1294. And 1296.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. So, Madam, sorry. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please read those? We'll do it this way. Madam Clerk, if you could read the docket into the record, and then we will poll the committee to put them before the council, then Counselor Linehan will speak on all of them, then we will vote individually, one by one.
And Madam President, may I?
Could we clarify the numbers? Did it start with docket 1282, or did it start with docket 1283?
1282, I believe.
Could we have a quick reset?
Oh, sure. Too many dockets.
Don't see the appropriate numbers that I'd like pulled today?
There are.
Thank you. And if you would read them, then...
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
And Counselor, please excuse me. On page nine of 14, in the Committee on Planning and Development, docket number 1283, sponsored by the mayor, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Thomas Hotling as a member of the Bay Village Historical District for term expiring June 30th, 2018, filed in committee on September 28th, 2016. Docket number 1285, in the Committee on Planning and Development, sponsored by the mayor, message and order on the confirmation of the appointment of Richard Jaeger as a member of the Bay Village Historical District for a term expiring June 30th, 2018, filed in the committee on 9/28/16. Docket number 1286, in the Committee on Planning and Development, sponsored by the mayor, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Kirsten Hoffman as a member of the Aberdeen Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2018, filed in committee on September 28th, 2016. Docket number 1287, in the Committee on Planning and Development, sponsored by the mayor, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of John Freeman as a member of the South End Landmark District Commission for term expiring June 30th, 2018, filed in committee on September 28th, 2016. Docket number 1288, in the Committee on Planning and Development, sponsored by the mayor, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of John Amadio as a member of the South End Landmark District Commission for term expiring June 30th, 2018. Docket number 1289, in the Committee on Planning and Development, sponsored by the mayor, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Lynn Smilage as a member of the Fort Point Channel Landmark District Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2018. And on page 10 of 14, docket number 1290, in the Committee on Planning and Development, sponsored by the mayor, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Lynn Smilage as a member of the Fort Point Channel Landmark District Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2017, referred to committee on September 28th, 2016. Docket number 1291, in the Committee on Planning and Development, sponsored by the mayor, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of David Berducci as a member of the Fort Point Channel Landmark District Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2017, referred to committee on September 28th, 2016. Docket number 1292, in the Committee on Planning and Development, sponsored by the mayor, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of David Berducci as a member of the Fort Point Channel Landmark District Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2017, referred to committee on September 28th, 2016. Docket number 1292, in the Committee on Planning and Development, sponsored by the mayor, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Richard Jaeger as a member of the Back Bay West/Bay State Road Architectural Conservation Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2018, referred to committee on September 28th, 2016. Docket number 1293, in the Committee of Planning and Development, sponsored by the mayor, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Thomas Hotling as a member of the Back Bay West/Bay State Road Architectural Conservation Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2018, referred to committee on September 28th, 2016. Docket number 1294, in the, in the Committee on Planning and Development, sponsored by the mayor, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Kirsten Hoffman as a member of the Mission Hill Triangle Architectural District Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2018, referred to committee on September 28th, 2016. Docket number 1296, in the Committee on Planning and Development, sponsored by the mayor, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Lindsay McJones as an alternate member of the Boston Landmark Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2019, referred to the committee on September 28th, 2016.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Linehan, you have the floor on all of these... Oh, excuse me. We need to poll the committee, the Planning and Development Committee to put these dockets before the council. Apologies.
Counselor Linehan. Counselor Flaherty. Sorry, I thought I had this done. Counselor Baker. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley. And Counselor Zachem.
Madam President, we have a unanimous vote for it from the Committee on Planning and Development.
Thank you. Now, all these dockets properly before the council. Counselor Linehan, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. So these particular matters are all individuals who serve now on the Landmark Commission. These people have all had a hearing last session, last year, and they're being dedicated, dedicated and assigned to specific neighborhood districts, landmark district. So that's why we didn't have a hearing. We thought, though, that we wouldn't ask for suspension and pass last, last week, just so that if there was someone who had an issue with what we, we had entered in our last session, that they'd have an opportunity to, to speak out. Basically, these people have all been part of a hearing process, and these confirmations I ask that you support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Would anyone else like to speak on any of the specific dockets? Okay, so we will proceed with the votes, starting with docket 1283. This is to confirm the appointment of Thomas Hotling for the Bay Village Historical District Commission. Counselor Linehan moves for passage of docket 1283. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1283 has passed, and Thomas Hotling has been confirmed. Docket 1285, for the confirmation of Richard Jaeger for the Bay Village Historic, Historical District Commission. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1285 has been passed, and Richard Jaeger has been confirmed. Docket 1286, for the confirmation of Kirsten Hoffman for the Aberdeen Architectural Conservation District Commission. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1286 has been passed, and Kirsten Hoffman has been confirmed. For docket 1287, the confirmation of John Freeman for the South End Landmark District Commission. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1287 has been passed, and John Freeman has been confirmed. Moving to docket 1288, for the confirmation of John Amodeo for the South End Landmark District Commission. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1288 has been passed, and John Amodeo has been confirmed. Docket 1289, for the confirmation of Susan Goganian for the Fort Point Channel Landmark District Commission. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1289 has been passed, and Susan Goganian has been confirmed. Docket 1290, for the confirmation of Lynn Smilage for the Fort Point Channel Landmark District Commission. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1290 has been passed, and Lynn Smilage confirmed. Docket 1291, for the confirmation of David Berducci as a member of the Fort Point Channel Landmark District Commission. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1291 has been passed, and David Berducci confirmed. Docket 1292, for the confirmation of Richard Jaeger for the Bay, Back Bay West/Bay State Road Architectural Conservation Commission. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1292 has been passed, and Richard Jaeger confirmed. Docket 1293, for the confirmation of Thomas Hotling for the Back Bay West/Bay State Road Architectural Conservation Commission. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1293 has been passed, and Thomas Hotling confirmed. Docket 1294, for the confirmation of Kirsten Hoffman for the Mission Hill Triangle Architectural District Commission. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1294 has been passed, and Kirsten Hoffman confirmed. And docket 1296, for the confirmation of Lindsay McJones for the, as an alternate member of the Boston Landmarks Commission. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1296 has been passed, and Lindsay McJones confirmed. Thank you. I do not envy our dear Madam Clerk. Any other takers for the green sheets? Okay, does anyone have any announcements or statements? Counselor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you again. I would just like to announce that next Thursday, October 13th, that we are hosting in conjunction with the Boston Public Health Commission and Arcan Training here with the City Council. All are invited to join, and I hope that all of you will consider joining us or sending your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sabi George. Counselor Lamatina, for what purpose do you rise?
Thank you. I have a statement. Madam President, thank you. Friday at 12 noon, we're having, we're celebrating Columbus Day. We're going to have the Italian flag-raising ceremony outside here at 12 noon. You're all welcome. At 11:30, we'll have a little reception before the flag-raising. And you're all welcome to come to East Boston on Sunday as we celebrate Columbus Day with a parade at 1 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Okay, just a reminder that Counselor Presley is upping the stakes for lunch today as we're going across, down the street to the Boston Public Market for a cooking lesson. So everybody has to get your aprons ready for that. And with that, I would ask everyone to please rise, counselors and guests, as we prepare to adjourn in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Campbell, Wanda Drumgold and Joseph Wheelwright. For Counselor Siomo, Patricia Campbell, Patricia Sidron, and William Jones. For Counselor Lamatina, Philip P. Kelly. For Counselor O'Malley, Fred Bratton and Jean Keane. For Counselor Sabi George and Counselor Lamatina, Arturo Frateroli. For Counselor McCarthy in the chair, Alexander Ritchie Frazoko. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when we adjourn today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals to meet again Wednesday, October 19th at 12 noon. All in favor of adjournment say aye. Any opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Council is adjourned.